Mr. Chairman, one more question for Alan on this subject and then I guess we'll move on. If you don't mind, the legislation that is doing it, who is sponsoring the legislation?
I believe it's in the, and I'm not gonna-
It's in the DAX budget?
Yes, I believe it's in there, in there.
Okay. They had put it in their, their list of priorities, but, okay.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
If I can make a quick comment while we're here, I, growing up here, I'm from here just like the rest of you are. They, we've done, the state has done the whole shell collecting thing before. And you're not gonna collect enough shells in this small county when most everything is leaving this county and it's not getting shucked on the half shell anymore, except at a restaurant, you don't collect enough shell to make a difference. I, I just don't see that happen. You know, I, I applaud that they put it in there and tried to make it sound good, but that's, they've, they've tried that before and it failed, so I don't know how City of Appalachia is doing it, it's gonna help. Because it's just gonna be more money than what it's worth. You're gonna spend more money on the, on the diesel and the person driving the dump truck to collect those shells than you gonna get out the shell. Since we're there, I'm, I'm just trying to help bring it full circle, I guess.
Now, the industry's changed, exactly right. So forty years ago, waters were shut and they were sold in the pint containers and we had shells to pile here. Nowadays, waters are shipped out of here in the shell and shucked at a raw bar and wherever they're eating and we don't have the shells.
I can remember back in the days though, when they used to have barge to ship down with oyster shells on, when they didn't make, you know-
The state of Florida bought those, because the state of Florida cared about that.
Yeah, but, but they used oyster shells and then they collected around it. You know, DEP for years, or Department of Ag, had the, the man with the truck and the tractor. Every day he was going to get those oyster shells and they stopped piling them right down here. That's not happening no more.
They don't do that.
No, none of that. You know, you know, the old ways are good ways. It sustained this bay for many a day. And I mean, back then, you had so much of a water supply shortage coming down to, not like it is now, because you've got so many people in those populated areas and all now that, than what you did before. But, you know, I like having this conversation because we know what's wrong with us and don't know if they will even respect us enough to listen to our opinion, so.
I tell you what we need to do, I see the handwriting on the wall, you can fight it to beat. Or two years from now, this place ain't gonna be able to hold it, so then all the marshments gonna be in here, that county commissioner.
The county commissioner.
That's the only thing they gonna say, the county commissioner is not the county commissioner. I'm letting them know where at now, it's not the county, it's the state of Florida and, and the city of Appalachia. Both of them, the county commissioner acts, they, they don't let us say nothing. But soon as the handwriting come on the wall, they gonna come in here blaming the county commissioner, the bay closed, y'all, y'all won't let, we can't make no money.
Well, Commissioner, I'm afraid they won't close the bay, that's, that's my fear. I think Commissioner Sanders said they're not gonna close the bay, they're just gonna let people starve to death, that's what's gonna happen.
We're gonna, we, we got to find them, we got to do something to make them, to keep, I'm trying to keep the folks out of here. Messing with the county commissioner, because the county commissioner is not doing it.
Well, I, I will say in my next item, Mr. Commissioner, I thought, you know, we were developing a partnership with the state of Florida. In our state expenditure plan, we have an effort to do a reshelling program in there, but I was, I, when I proposed this to you all and I proposed to the state of Florida at the same time, it was gonna be a partnership. Well, we put some money up, the state of Florida put some money up. Well, we, we're upholding our share, where we're proposing to use some of our state expenditure money for a wish of reshelling, but I thought there'd be an equal match with the state of Florida. I thought we'd have ten to fifteen million dollars of reshelling at some point. The state of Florida is not providing any money.
Go ahead, put it out.
Alright, so item number three, drive forward the copy of the draft state expenditure plan, or SEP. Public comment for the SEP has begun. All counties are getting the same amount of money, which is twelve point six four million dollars, but the availability of funds is staggered as BP makes payments according to the court settlement. And so that's over fifteen years, we'll get twelve point six million dollars. After the public comment ends in February, the SEP will go to the governor, who will then submit to the Gulf Council, which is a federal group, for approval. The consortium consultants are hoping that the Gulf Council will approve the SEP by May, although there is no statutory schedule for, no, I'm sorry, no statutory timeline that the council must follow. Embedded in the four hundred and seventy page plan is a proposed schedule for projects. The proposed schedule is only valid if the governor submits it as proposed, and right now I believe he will, but I, I just need to make that caveat. At this time, funding for projects, for, I'm sorry, funding for planning and design of all the county projects will start in the first year, which should be two thousand and nineteen. Construction funds for dredging the East Point Channel and building a new EOC would start, could start in two, twenty twenty, but will take until twenty twenty one for all our funds to be available for both those projects. Because the Two Mile project does not have its dredging permit yet from the state, the Two Mile project will be dredged after the East Point Channel. And again, the East Point Channel got its permit and it's improperly referenced in the plan, which I'll correct, Commissioner Jones pointed it out to me, but the East Point Channel is ready to go as soon as we get the money. The county's third project, an Apalachicola Bay Oyster Recovery Project, is phased so that it can start in two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three, but these timelines are all subject to funds being available. Now, again, that Apalachicola Bay Oyster Project was supposed to be a joint project between the state of Florida and Franklin County for ten to fifteen million dollars. And we are putting our, our share, upwards of five million dollars, and I proposed this to DAX at the time saying, well, hopefully it'll match us, and that never came through. So, you know, there's clearly, no one is gonna put any effort in this bay except the county, and that is not how this bay's been managed for the last fifty years. It's very disappointing. The board needs to understand that the SEP is a draft plan, and I will say it's unknown how the governor will act. The governor's staff at the, at the consortium meeting supported the SEP, so I think the governor's on, on board with that, but we don't know how the Gulf Council reacts. If there's any, if there is considerable negative public comment on the draft plan, then all the timelines mentioned should be, or could be delayed. And to say the public comment starts now goes on for a month, so we'll know in the next few days, or next few weeks, whether there'll be a big comment problem. And I have one last item, which I didn't print. The deeds to Island View Campground, the property we're getting from St. Joe came electronically today. I've given it to Mr. Schuler for him to review and I gave a copy to Lori Heinz, so we have gotten the deeds from St. Joe Company for the two parcel land on either side of our Island View Campground. And I had a meeting last week with them and with the St. Joe Company, talked about relocating the road, and so we'll see what makes progress on that. The deal in the settlement was, we got the land immediately for the park, we will get the land for the road if we get DOT to agree to, to realignment. So we were, we were making some headway on that process. So maybe at Mr. Schuler's next meeting, we report that we've recorded the deeds, so we'll see how fast.
Yeah, I haven't even seen them.
No, I just sent them to you this morning, I just got them, so you don't even know what happened, so I'm sorry.
I forgot, you know, I'm getting to that age.
No, I forgot a few things, I feel, so. That's the end of my report.
Okay, any items from Alan?
One item, on February eighth, the Gulf Consortium is gonna be looking at the plan, the SEP, the state expenditure plan up in Tallahassee, that is, during the legislative days for Florida Association of Counties, and on the eighth, I cannot be there. I've got a meeting in West Florida. So either Alan or Michael is our alternate. Michael needs to go to the meeting or at least be on the telephone to ask questions and everything. But I just want the board to know that I'm not gonna be able to be there.
And I, frankly, so next, on January twenty-ninth, the Triad Board is meeting here in this room, so that meeting's on for one o'clock. Okay, that's my report.
Okay, Mr. Maroon, you're up next. We got about thirteen minutes before the first public hearing, so we might come and get through there.
I'll try my best, but Commissioners, I warned you that this would be a way longer meeting than I thought it is. I'm getting old, my judgment is bad. Item number one, reform the board that Weems was able to pay three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars towards the accounts payable and a January tenth payroll from the operation account last week, leaving a balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars in that account. The money market account as of Friday, January twelfth, had a balance of five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. All this is being done, Commissioners, without them having to tap into that money that you authorize them to have access to in case. So, I guess I'm saying so far, so good. And all this is also being done, I need to also add to, add to that, that it's being done and they still have not yet received their, the dish funds, because all this is through lib funds, accounts receivable, and some cause, the report refunds that they're getting. Item number two, inform the board on January fifth, Mr. David Domain of Community Hospital Corporation, he's their senior vice president, stated as of February second, Mr. Jim Coleman, Jr., will no longer serve as their senior vice president of Southeastern Hospital Operations. Mr. Coleman has taken a position with Alliance Management Services as their CEO, President. Mr. Domain says he is in the final stages of vetting a candidate that will assume Mr. Coleman's responsibilities and will appear at one of your February meetings to introduce this person to the board. Until then, he will serve as the county's main contact. That's where we are.
Okay, can I, can I add something to that, Mr. Chairman, please? Just a minute. At the last meeting with the board voting unanimous for it, Mr. Commissioner Lockley put out a motion for staff to contact Capital Regional Medical Center in Tallahassee to maybe see what they may have to offer Franklin County. I'm gonna put out a motion that we contact also Sacred Heart in Port St. Joe and see what they may, and have staff meet with them and see what they may can offer Franklin County, as far as that.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Continue. Item number three, inform the board that FWC has approximately four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars available to award another derelict vessel removal grant. The application deadline is February twenty-first. Mr. Kirchens stated that there are three vessels in the Franklin County derelict vessel list that are good candidates. The first is a sailboat in the Caravelle River beneath the power line. The second is a shrimp boat in Tucker Creek off St. Mark's River, just upstream of, upstream of the railroad trestle. And the third is a shrimp boat sunk on the west bank of Apalachicola River, which is actually, which actually places it in Gulf County. Franklin County could get, could remove this vessel with Gulf County's approval. Staff was not aware of this grant cycle sooner because of a problem with FWC's website. In order to apply for the grant, excuse me, the county will need a bid from a contractor to remove each vessel. However, there isn't enough time to place a solicitation for bids in newspaper, receive and open these bids, and then award a contract. The board would like to apply for this grant, I recommend board action to direct staff to write the grant application, contact parties that have expressed interest in derelict vessels removal in the past to solicit bids, and add a solicitation to receive bids on the county's website.
Motion, second.
I did not contact Attorney Schuler to see, do we need to declare an emergency to do this, or in the manner in which I'm stating, it's, it's fine with, you know?
Repeat, again, why is this an emergency to apply for a grant?
Because the FWC had an issue on their website, we weren't aware of this funding to do this program, and the deadline is the twenty-first. There's no way we could run ads in the, in the paper, get the bids open them, and then have them presented here to, I'm sorry, to be open and then, you know, to meet the deadline.
It would have to be awarded on January the twenty-first, is that right?
February twenty-first. I'm sorry, February twenty-first.
I don't know, well, we award them, we just have to have it in hand, when our application, FWC, has to have, has to have the bids in hand.
Yeah, the bids, each contract has to state how much they're gonna charge to remove each boat.
It has to go with the application?
Yes, as we write the application.
Well, we're bidding for services, the county bid policy doesn't require us necessarily, it's the board's option whether to require bids for services of this nature.
Well, no, it's, well, services, I mean, it's gonna be a fee associated, you know, five, whatever it is to remove the vessel.
No, I understand that, but our local, our local bid policy, technically it only applies as a mandatory requirement to the purchase of tangible personal property. It's said the board's option whether to require bidding for personal services. Typically, they would, but certainly you don't have to do that. In this case, I, I think just a, a motion of the second, you don't have to declare an emergency, it's a motion of the second for, not to require bids and move forward would be fine.
We have a motion and a second to move forward because of the small timeline. I would direct county staff to get with Mr. Don Butler in Gulf County, get there, let him bring it to his commissioner and get approval. This particular boat that they're talking about is one that I put in, is on the west bank of the Apalachicola River before you get to the brothers up there going up Apalachicola River. And actually, this boat was going up the river and was coming back after a hurricane, because typically all your boats go up in the river swamp and tie up because of the rising water and the winds and all. Well, he was coming back and hit a log, and that's what caused this boat to sink. But it, but it's a navigational hazard, but it's also an environmental hazard, not only for us but for Gulf County. It just so happens that the way the line runs between Franklin and Gulf, it ended up on the Gulf County side, but I'm sure that they're not gonna have any problem with us eliminating this environmental hazard. So I, I look for that to be done real, real soon. And this other one in Tucker Creek, somebody pulled it up in the middle of a creek. And it almost blocked the creek up, but you could still pass by it with a small boat. Now they're saying the fuel, the fuel tanks and the boat is separated and the, and the whole creek is now blocked up. And a lot of people like to fish it, you know? An individual come to me and told me that the boat now is, is blocked up the whole creek, so it needs to be removed also and get the old fuel tanks and stuff out of the water, and it's just good for our environment, as we've done with the other derelict vessel programs. This is just another program and I support it, and I think we need to move forward on it. We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, how, how does, how do you about getting boats on that list?
The process that Mark goes through, he looks for the boats, then he runs it by FWC and I believe the Coast Guard, I, I could be wrong with that. And I think they both, one of them approved that, and it has to be a certain feet away. Commissioner Bassi, help me out, how far is it, it has to be away from the shore again?
It's over here about twenty-five foot away from dock or the shore.
Yes, sir. And there can't be any identifying things on it, because if they can find the owner, then we cannot get on the derelict vessel. No matter how, how much of an impediment to the navigation or to environmental issues it is, if there's an owner of that boat or record they can find, then we can't get on the derelict vessel, and that's the biggest problem.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Actually, individuals are, and like I said on this one, identify, but then FWC will go by and, and make sure the boat is where I said it was or any individual that reports a derelict vessel. And we removed quite a few last year, and, and these are just three more and their money's available, and I think the county ought to move forward on it. We do have a motion and a second.
Just, just answered, there is a list and it has the numbers and it has their exact location, longitude, latitude.
Because there are a lot of boats that are, are a hazard, but, but there's still an owner associated with it, that's why we can't.
But if we weren't pressed for time, Commissioner Bassi could tell you a good story, but.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, any other comments? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Item number four, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on a professional architectural and engineering fee proposal with Barnik, Franzak, Barlow, and Schuler for the St. George Island restroom facility building renovation project. The total cost of this proposal is nine thousand dollars and includes the costs for construction documents, bidding phase, and construction administration.
Pleasure of the board. We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Item five, I'm gonna have to ad lib a little bit. Mr. Doug Schuler of the same firm assured me that the necessary documentation to advertise the St. George Island restroom facility building renovation project will be ready later this week. Actually, he sent it to me yesterday. So since the next regular meeting, it's three weeks from today, and it is the board's desire to start this project as soon as possible. Is the board willing today to authorize advertising this project? I will circulate the documentation to each of you before sending it to the newspaper. Actually, I have it in hand, I've been watching the emails, him and Mark has been going back and forth, getting the document corrected, I need typos, so it'll be ready for you guys this afternoon to look at.
Pleasure of the board. Motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley to get this bathroom, restroom facility building renovation project started on the island. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Finally, Commissioners, inform the board I have received the Franklin County Jail's twenty seventeen jail and medical inspection reports. Based on summary page, it appears that the jail fared pretty well throughout the entire inspection. If you'd like a copy, I can send it to you electronic or paper, just let me know. Otherwise, that, it'll be with the board file. And that's my report, Commissioner.
Anything from the board from Mr. Mike Maroon? There being none, we'll move to the next agenda item. Public hearing, local planning agency, metal structures and pole barns.
And look at the time.
Eleven o'clock.
We're doing it right, not we're supposed to.
Board of County Commissioners, nine in recess. This meeting of the Franklin County Commission acting as a local planning agency is convened.
Commissioners, this is a public hearing on ordinance of Franklin County creating development standards and restrictions for the use of metal structures and pole barns as a single-family detached dwelling within Franklin County, providing for definitions, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. As the chairman indicated, your meeting as the local planning agency, you will not be taking any votes during this session. You will be taking public comment, and at this time, I would request that there's any public comment on the proposed ordinance. Now would be the time for you to come forward and speak.
Any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Gerard Shannon, I live on South Bay Shore Drive. This ordinance looks to be in good order. The only thing I would request is, in section three, which is general development standards, that there be a specific inclusion for windows and doors. I know in the past it's been stated that that provision is covered under the Florida residential development standards, but that did not prevent the building on South Bay Shore Drive to be built. That's the four thousand square foot building referenced in section, under prohibitions, section three. That building is built with one door and two small windows to the side. It looks no more like a house than any commercial building. So I think windows and doors would be appreciated if you could specify that.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I did not catch your name, but-
Gerard Shannon.
Mr. Shannon, when this ordinance was presented by me to your planning and zoning commission, the need for windows was something that was brought up by members of the public and also discussed by the planning and zoning board, and I do have an intention by the time we come back for our second and final public hearing to add in a requirement for windows. I just needed an opportunity to meet with your planning and zoning department and get some guidance from them on how best to phrase that language in the ordinance. But that will be in the final draft.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Any, uh, Commissioner comment?
Oh, I thought we had someone else coming up.
Oh, we do?
I'm sorry. She was escaping, not coming forward.
For the record, Attorney Schuler and for the board, I have circulated an email from Mr. George Coon in reference to, he's against the ordinance, just wanted to be on the record that I did.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Any Commissioner comment?
No, but I, I did want to go over just with the board, some of the, the general provisions of the ordinance. I just wanted to get public comment out of the way first, so you'll, you'll have a, at least for the record, a verbal record of what we're looking at. I'm, I'm not going to go through all of the whereas provisions, and I would remind the board that this is the first of, of two public hearings. You will be voting up or down where the other, it's your February the twentieth meeting, but there will not be any vote today either from the LPA or the Board of County Commissioners. In the definitions section, I have a definition of metal structure. I have provided a definition for a pole barn dwelling. I, I do have in my notes from the planning and zoning meeting to add a provision specifically stating that pole barn dwellings are to include, but not necessarily be limited to these pole barn kits. They, oftentimes, they, they are referred to as pole barn kits, as opposed to a pole barn dwelling. Have a definition of metal, my definition for structure, and a definition of a single-family dwelling. The more important provisions, I want to go over with the LPA, are in section three, which consists of the general development standards and the prohibitions. And if the board has any directions or guidance for me and things that you want to see corrected, added, or in some fashion changed, please let me know. But the way I have proposed this draft is that the metal structure of pole barn dwelling used as a single-family detached dwelling shall have an orientation which faces the front of the lot on which it is located. It shall not face either, either a side street or alley. There shall be a covered porch running the entire length of the front of the dwelling. This shall not prevent the construction of additional porches on the structure. As opposed to having a flat roof or a slightly pitched roof, there, there will be a requirement for a gable roof with a pitch between twelve and forty-five degrees, constructed of either standing seam metal or dimensional shingles. The exterior wall covering shall be of a material other than metal, such as without limitation, brick, wood, vinyl siding, hardywood, or similar traditional materials used to construct a single-family dwelling. And I have added into that a, a, what will be a new paragraph E, which will have a provision that the Florida Building Code, and specifically as to windows, will, will be addressed in the future version of the ordinance. In the prohibition section, fairly standard, any use not specifically authorized by ordinance will be prohibited. Metal structures and pole barn dwellings shall not be used for multifamily dwellings as defined in your zoning code. The metal structure of pole barn on section three, which is, is what Mr. Shannon was referring to, the, the situation where you had a four thousand square foot metal structure that was built and within that four thousand square feet, I, one thousand square feet was developed as heated and cooled residential space. And then within that same roof line, okay, so you've got four thousand square feet, in one corner of that you've got a thousand square feet heated and cooled space for residents, and then on the concrete floor in, in, in the remaining three thousand square feet that's not heated, that's not cooled, they're using that as storage. My prohibition number three is, is my intent to prevent that from being, occurring in the future, and it states that metal structures and pole barn dwellings shall not combine storage space in single-family dwelling under the same roof within the same structure unless the storage space is contained within the exterior walls of the single-family dwelling or an attached garage. I define attached garage subsequently, or further down into the document. For example, and not by way of limitation, this ordinance is intended to prohibit the construction of a structure enclosing four thousand square feet on a foundation of which a thousand square feet is constructed as a single-family dwelling with heated and cooled space, and the remaining three thousand square feet is not heated and cooled space and is used for storage of items of personal property such as, but not limited to, boats, recreational vehicles, motor vehicles, and similar items of personal property located outside of the single-family dwelling but under the same roof within the same structure. I have placed a, a maximum square footage of two thousand square feet for the single-family dwelling which is constructed out of a metal structure or a pole barn. That was really more of a, a placeholder for discussion. I did not really have any guidance, as to that number, I just, I threw that in there for discussion. So if, if the board is okay with having a limitation on the maximum square footage for these types of buildings, it can be, you know, two thousand square feet or, or some other number that, that the board comes up with at present. You know, other than making sure a structure meets the setback requirement, you don't really have any limitations on the maximum square footage of a house. But in this case, since we had this large metal structure that was in a residential area, I was trying to limit the, the maximum square footage of a metal structure or pole barn used as a dwelling. Prohibition number five, if the metal structure or pole barn includes an attached garage, it shall be enclosed on all sides with a roof matching the shape, angle, and color of the roof of the single-family dwelling. The square footage of the garage shall not exceed six hundred square feet. Again, that is a number I put out for discussion of the board, will something larger or smaller or that number, then please give me guidance. The square footage of the attached garage shall not be included in the calculation of the two thousand square foot maximum square footage for the, the residential structure constructed out of metal in a pole barn dwelling. It will be limited to one story. Shipping containers shall not be used as a residential dwelling. There was some requests from P and Z, one of the members wanting to clarify that this prohibition does not apply to mobile homes. I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to add that language in, but I just wanted to make the board aware that discussion had been had. And that concludes my presentation to the board. The board have any comments or corrections?
As you, as you mentioned, the Southern Building Code now, is that where the, you know, you're seeing nothing about sect it, you're seeing nothing about where your orders coming from with the public order, well, all that's contained within that Southern Building Code as you referred to?
There, we have other provisions in our building code that would address those issues.
Okay.
I don't think we need to duplicate them within the, this ordinance has a single purpose, which is to create development regulations, development standards, and prohibitions on, on metal buildings and pole barns used as residential dwellings. We're not trying to create a miniature code unto itself.
So they, they still have to comply with all that?
Yes, so they do.
The Zone Code describes, if you want to get a building for a house, the Zone, the Zone Code itself describes what you need. That includes a site plan.
And that will be included with this order?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I was, one thing I would, any comments from the Commissioners?
You gotta be careful how you do it, 'cause I've seen them, people make houses out of, type the trailers and everything.
Well, we're doing the best we can to regulate that. Now, one thing I did want to bring to the, the board's attention, the public's attention, is this is- is, uh, this is not regulating like storage buildings in residential areas. I, I have had, uh, at least one person come to me, and they, they had a complaint that someone in their neighborhood had a large metal storage building, but it, you know, it did not exceed your thirty-five-foot height restriction. Uh, I presume that it met the setbacks. I mean, it, it could, you could still go into a residential area if you had a large enough lot. This ordinance will not prevent, say, a four thousand square foot storage space. All this is going to regulate is you can't use it as a residential dwelling. I'm not suggesting that you need to embark on a new level of regulation. I just want to make sure the board was aware that this is addressing a very narrow issue, which is the use of these metal buildings and pole barns as residential structures. It's not regulating storage buildings in reg, in residential areas. So as long as they can get a building permit and they can meet the height restrictions and your other development standards, I mean, it could, you know, in theory, be a four or five thousand square foot storage building.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Attorney Schuler, yeah, this, it actually come about like you, the example you used is actually the example we come from.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, it's an attempt, I believe and understand, and maybe I'm not misspeaking, for us to just clarify that the county doesn't really have a position on whether you want a stick-built home or a metal-framed home, this pole barn. We're not trying to regulate and say you can't do that, but at the same time, we do need to regulate a commercial structure in the middle of an R one district, which is what we wind up having. We're just trying to stop the replication of that.
That is correct. This, this, the attempt by the board in dragging this public policy to protect everyone's property values, uh, in, in the area. But if there are no further comments, my recommendation is that the, the chairman close the L P A meeting and then reconvene the county commission meeting and call for public comment.
The meeting of the local planning agency is closed. Board of County Commissioners has now reconvened. Is there any public comment on the ordinance? If you have public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Pfeifer, just speaking for myself. Uh, two things I thought were, were potentially missing. Uh, on the exterior skin, it says, uh, it can, uh, it doesn't specifically say you can't use metal, but it does say that walls will be, uh, will be brick or other materials such as that. Uh, but, uh, nothing was mentioned about gable ends, and it's not uncommon sometimes to see people, uh, brick up or put siding on their, on their walls, but not their gable ends, and I've seen that, and you might want to include gable end, uh, gable ends, because it is actually different from walls. Uh, and the other thing that I, I picked up, and I did hear something about windows, but, uh, perhaps you want to require residential-type windows in these structures rather than commercial or storefronts. And that was my only two comments. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Commissioner comment on the ordinance?
I got one, just to clarify, the gentleman that came up earlier, his, his comment was about windows and doors, was it not? Did he mention windows and doors?
He did.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Shannon, he mentioned windows and doors, as far as the.
Any other commissioner comment?
Commissioners, if there is no comment from the, the, any other board member, I